7:32, I'm going to re-enter us back into public session. Just for everyone, for the record and for everyone's knowledge, at 6:30 we opened our session and immediately went into executive session, which is the appropriate protocol, so I can't then go into session again. We are just coming back to public session as stated on the agenda at 7:32 versus 7:30. Would you all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, nice to see a full house. I do just want to remind everyone around the table where we do have a reasonably full house and people are further out in the back, do our best to project so everybody can hear us. So, we do have a couple of people that have signed in for public comment. Just a quick reminder on public comment, I did this at the very beginning of these sessions back in May and I'm just going to remind you all again, I have three main rules for public comment, what you say must be truthful and accurate, it has to be related to Pembroke, and you cannot call out an individual or an employee of the district. Ironically, I see a couple of teachers here, I did that to protect all of you when I first started as chair several months ago, but it is important and everybody deserves sort of that respect. It is a two-minute public comment, I've never been really picky unless we have a lot of people, we only have three people that have asked, so I don't think that'll be an issue. And then, in our public comment goes a maximum of 15 minutes. So, Julie Morris and Julie Bosworth, Friends of Pembroke Public Schools, on point of view to explore.
And I'd like to add a couple of quick things to that.
That's fine, Julie, that's fine.
Can we just remind that there is a microphone that you need to speak into, it doesn't amplify in the room in justice so that local scene can pick it up for folks at home, so the microphone's up here.
And, well, I know of these two of you pretty well, just for the record, state your name, your address, and then, go ahead.
Sure. My name is Julie Morris, I live at 11 Tara Drive.
Julie Bosworth, 20 Edward Drive.
And Kelly Christie, 32 Tara Drive.
Thank you all. Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you. Good evening. Twelve years ago, we co-founded the Friends of Pembroke Public Schools. The steering committee made up of Pembroke residents and parents met for two years with town and school leaders, staff members and neighbors, and successfully created a plan to pass Pembroke's first override to benefit class sizes, programs, and even salaries for many here tonight. Leaders here felt very comfortable reaching out to us with numerous requests, big and small. In 2020, we were again contacted by school leaders in this room to grow the bench, to create an encore of our magic to help with school financial woes. We brought on some new members, including one who went on to join your team. Our children are now almost all in college or beyond, but our interest in the strength of our school remains. Tonight, FPPS has an ask for you. We come before you to ask, as the elected school committee, to remain impartial and to seek to understand why and how the employees, parents, and students in this district are I have guided young readers and writers to understand thorough analysis of points of view. In "The Frog Prince Continued," the princess kissed the frog, the frog turned into a prince, and they lived happily ever after. Actually, according to the author, they weren't so happy, they were miserable. In "The True Story of the Three Little Pigs," it's another great example. From the perspective of the wolf, he wasn't so big and bad after all, his huffing and puffing was due to a terrible cold, and he was knocking on his neighbor's doors, the pigs, just to get a cup of sugar from his dear old granny. Analyzing bearing point of view. Analyzing varying points of view is basic enough even for our youngest students to understand. Throughout life, learning the perspective of all sides of a situation is important, simply a necessity, an absolute non-negotiable for unbiased town leaders. As leaders, it's important to calmly process and understand all points of view before reacting. Just as effective educators model social thinking skills as part of conflict resolution, in your roles, you must listen to all community interests in bettering our schools, hear the values and concerns of all sides, and please be a peaceful voice of positive advocacy. Certainly before acting on an initial reaction to a story, one must consult all involved parties to avoid forming biased, uninformed opinions and responding erroneously. Such actions would negatively impact your character and integrity. I have openly shared my story with many members sitting around the table. For those interested in my point of view, reach out, I'm happy to meet for a cup of coffee. Many community members present tonight have stories related to emotional and physical concerns in our schools. Others are here in support of those who have experienced harassment, bullying, or intimidation, but feel too vulnerable to find their voice publicly. Some shared stories were expressed years ago, including my own. This information is not new news, these truths are not unknown. Before statements about expressions of advocacy and attempts to hold leaders accountable are equated with bullying or harassment on the part of the whistleblowers, we simply ask all members of the school committee to act in an unbiased manner. Please put your preconceived notions, past experiences, friendships, and even personal relationships aside, and fully listen to everyone's perspective before rashly drawing conclusions and reacting. We expect better of our elected leaders.
Thank you. Nicole Pelletier. So, you wanted to talk about supporting our children.
Thank you, pardon?
I said, I'm just reading what you wrote, supporting our children.
Yes, most certainly.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, I think it is very important to first acknowledge that we are all here in this room for a reason. We as parents, educators, and members of the community care about children and the outcome of those that grow up here. This being said, I find it unfitting that we so strongly consider past precedent when we are making decisions that impact the development of our future leaders. For example, when we use the maximum as a benchmark for determining class size, we also cheapen the education of the children by way of spreading their teachers far too thin. When we treat our children like numbers, or even value figures in a budget, we lose sight of the bigger picture. It has to be proposed, or, excuse me, it has been proposed that seventy children in North Pembroke be subject to the "at least it's not the maximum" reasoning by way of losing a teacher and an entire classroom. Their educations, the equivalent of approximately 1.25 million dollars, are then subject to the risk of limitation, or at worst, failure. So, instead of taking the risk, I propose to you that you ask for help. Instead of working with scarcity, let's focus on making education abundant for all students. Let's start with the classrooms when it comes to social and emotional support.
Thank you. So, thank you both, that was done in a very professional, in a very open way, I actually really appreciate it, so thank you, all four of you, for your thoughts and your comments. I have already acknowledged you guys, obviously, as I've called you up, but thank you, I love seeing this many people here, and as we go through our budget cycles and our budget season, please come back. The more you know, and actually, exactly, I think to your point, Nicole, the more you know, the better you can advocate, the more you know, the better you can partner and you can help, so please come back and please be involved, it is critical for all of our kids, so thank you all for taking the time to be here. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
I just had one comment. You know, and I think another piece is that we're also willing to meet with you, if you want to meet one-on-one with anybody on the committee, you can always reach out to do so.
I'm sorry. So, no adjustments to the agenda. Out of communications, I'm going to ask you to humor me for a moment, and I'm doing this more for the young lady who took the time to send me a very official letter, she asked me to consider what my next steps would be, but Sophia Elde, I want to thank you, I got your letter, I truly appreciate it, and I will talk to your mommy, so thank you very much.
Patrick, how old is Sophia?
She's about six, seven, yeah, yeah. And anytime a six- or seven-year-old wants to write a school committee member, you think that's awesome, so, thank you very, very much. So, we do have bills circulating and are moving around, we are going to go right into the superintendent's report.
Oh, but one more thing, happy birthday to Allison.
Oh.
Happy birthday.
I almost forgot, yes.
Happy birthday.
Allison turns the big three-three today, so we really do, really do want to acknowledge that, so thank you very much.
My apologies, yes.
I really do appreciate it. So, we will go into the superintendent's report.
Sure. Continuing on with our budget presentation that we started at the last meeting with the elementary schools, both Donna and Mark are here tonight to present the PCMS and PHS budget, I think we're going to go in the order that is listed, so Donna is going to go first, we are having minor technical difficulties, so for your viewing pleasure, Donna will be standing up and presenting the slides, so.
Donna, I'd like to buy, I'd like to buy a vowel.
Two hundred and fifty dollars, I know my stuff's like real important.
Yeah, you can take your mic out, that's fine.
You can take it out, yeah.
All right, and it doesn't?
Yeah, it does not.
Okay, so I'll try to speak louder, because I definitely don't have a really strong voice. All right, so this is the PCMS budget present?
You want to face us.
Presentation.
It's awkward.
Where should I be standing?
You're good right there.
Okay.
So, talk to us, we push that over, just to make sure folks in the audience can see it.
Okay. Here we go, we're going to see if this works.
No.
Nope, perfect.
So, we need the STEM pathway kids here.
There you go. Do like a swirl, okay.
So, this is just kind of the agenda, I'm going to look at the PCMS enrollment and the class sizes, and then we're going to do an overview of some requests from last year, as well as initiative that's been in place, and then my current budget request.
Swipe it. Perfect, all right, so unlike Mark, I think you have a ten-year view, this is an eight-year view, but you can just see from the little graphic, enrollments are dropping a little bit, over time, so it's been trending.
Enrollment's been dropping a little bit, but with a somewhat of a downward trend, so that's that view for you to see. And this is next year's enrollment, so this is Bryanville, Hubbermark, and North, this was accurate as of January twenty-ninth, because sometimes the October enrollment data is used, so I wanted to just clarify where these numbers came from. So, you see fairly balanced across the three elementary schools, feeding into our future seventh graders next year, which is one hundred and ninety-four, and our current seventh graders going into eighth next year, one hundred and eighty-four, so ballpark, we'll have about three hundred and seventy-eight students at the middle school next year. All right, so these are the class sizes, so how it works, this is the seventh grade this year, this is an average class size, the number of sections, and then the class range, because just an average can be distorting, so that's why it's fairly accurate the whole way through. So, as you can see, for the primary courses the students are taking, in seventh grade, we're running about twenty-one to twenty-eight, with an average like in the low twenties. And then in eighth grade, this is one of our smallest class sizes that we've had, it's running from like nineteen to like twenty-two, and then you can see what the range of distribution is among each, and then these are our world language class sizes. So, before I go into kind of what you funded last year for the middle school, I wanted to talk about the MYCAP initiative, that has been ongoing into this year, too, I've gotten some grant money for it, I think what they're finding in the destiny and the research is that students understanding the purpose of education as kind of broader than just learning the specific math and applying it is a really important key to engagement over time. So, I've been working on this for several years with a team at the middle school, so the first year we got an initiative, we got forty-five hundred dollars to come up with the seed grant, we did a lot of planning. The second year, we had an implementation grant of fifty-five hundred, the majority of that money was paid to teachers outside their contractual time to develop lessons, to give them time to think about it, be thoughtful about it, so I didn't want to just add something to their plate, I wanted to think thoughtfully about how we integrate a new initiative. And then, this year, we got twenty-four thousand dollars, which I also wanted to get a chance to brag about that here, you know, I'm glad you all came.
And Donna, in twenty-five, twenty-six?
Is it twenty-five?
Are you, so next year, are you thinking there's going to be grant money available there, too?
It's, I think that the Department of Education is recognizing the importance of this, and the, where we go for training every year is getting bigger and bigger and bigger, so I do anticipate there's going to be a lot of money at the middle school, potentially at the high school and at the elementary level, I do think there's going to be some funding opportunities.
For things like this?
I think so. Yep, this type of focus.
Would it be helpful if I came up and did that, so you can focus on talking, like I can come and do that?
Have you picked up the skill of it?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I just feel bad, it's like.
It's not going to be as good, but.
Teamwork.
Up, here we go.
So, you are not a good man or mark.
All right, perfect. So, we have, with the MYCAP initiative, we have lesson plans that are happening in all content areas, I didn't put all this detail up there, but they're happening in all content areas, so each teacher does a lesson plan for the year, so it's embedded across the whole building, but each teacher of content area is only doing one lesson. So, we have a lot of breadth, but I don't feel like putting undue burden on teachers. This year, I also focused on doing experiential learning opportunities, also known as field trips, we don't do a lot of field trips at the middle school, collecting the money and managing it is just challenging, but I was able to fund field trips. So, the seventh grade and the eighth grade each took a full-day field trip to Gillette Stadium for a math field trip, and worked on like a fantasy football, did a lot of communication work, marketing work, it was really, really a great field trip and very focused, and we're also hoping to do additional field trips, like, we're hoping to have our Learning Center students go to a local landscaping company, so that's in the work for early March, this grant will pay for that, our literacy students, we're hoping are going to be going to one of the local farms to talk about small business and farming and all the roles involved in that, and our world language is still exploring, where they're going to hope to have their world language kids, so I'm hoping to really unfold a lot of field trips this year to help expand students' understanding. The elementary school teachers have been offered the opportunity to write MYCAP lessons to help them get the ready to go up to the middle school, and that is paid curriculum work outside of teachers' contractual hours, and that is voluntary. Not surprisingly, the elementary teachers were all on board and were like expanding on even what I wanted to do, so they have been really enthusiastic about kind of jumping into this initiative. And, to tie it a little bit back to the high school, we're able to use some of the money to work on some curriculum work, so we're going to hopefully have a new elective in the fall called Medical Detectives, which will look at the bio-physical, I think that'll be a nice addition. I don't feel as bad of it as I did before.
Katrina, you're up next, I'm starting right now.
I can do it.
You're going to make it look so easy. So, the last couple of years, we've had a Titan Pump's room, which has one full-time paraprofessional managing that, in conjunction with the front office and our staffing there, and the other thing I asked for last year was a special education paraprofessional, because we had an increased number of special ed students coming up, so that can really vary from year to year, as you know as teachers, on what it looks like in the distribution. What we knew is there was a lot more students coming up with special ed needs, so that fed into the paraprofessional request, and I wanted to just go over the compass a little bit, because it's a really important model, I think, that's available in different names in all five buildings.
Whatever. If I can just really, you're going to embarrass if I might just fail.
We should have a fundraiser competition where we just try to do this.
Batteries or something, yes. Does anyone recognize a pattern?
A little aggressive.
So, the compass, these are just some of the goals, to support students who have fallen behind for kind of various reasons, it facilitates work completion, time management, assignment distribution, it provides students with a quieter environment, and honestly, like, also like an emotionally safer environment sometimes, so when you go into the room, it doesn't look like a regular classroom, here's like couches and this beanbag chair, and this sitting regular desk, but part of it is if you're struggling to come into school, you want to model the different stage of room to time, that's soft, warm, different lighting, so kind of all through to trying to increase your sense of connection to your staff member in that, as well as the room, as well as increasing sense of safety for students, because it's really, really important to learning.
Can we slow, slow?
Slow? All right, so here's some data, so this is one of the first two terms, we had thirteen students that were assigned to Compass, five of them were qualified for various reasons, so absences sometimes, some social, emotional need, behavioral need, or just a need for academic support, that kind of processed through the front office, and additional support for like students, other students for ELL. They were assigned for one period every day or every other day, some get it longer, but the average is twenty days. The really nice thing about Compass is it is a transitory program in that like, it doesn't have to go through a whole long process to get children in there when they need it, and it's not exclusionary, right, either, so you can be a student with five oh four, or an IEP, or you cannot be, right, you could just walk in the door, right, it gives us a lot of flexibility to really target support in a really timely manner, which as educators, we all know how important that is, to not miss that window, so I am very, very grateful for this program.
Yeah.
All right, so this is just some data, results, the average grade was increased by eleven point six percent, and there's just some breakdowns here between science, social studies, and world language, and again, twenty-one point five days. This program is successful, because I will tell you that I am incredibly proud of how collaborative my building is at every level, you know, Mr. O'Neill, who over, who is, who does this program as a Compass teacher, works really well with all the teachers, the teachers work well with him, for me, it's really grateful, because it just doesn't feel like there's always a lot of ego at the middle school, it really, the focus really stays on the students, and, you know, the middle school kids bring the drama to the table, right, for us, right, but I really do appreciate how collaborative this process is, it's successful because everyone's involved, we're trying to put the right pieces in place for students. Okay, so once again, based on current student enrollment data, the special.
Donna, I need you to face this way a little bit more, they're having a hard time hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So, once again, the special education numbers need are rising, which I don't feel like is unusual, right? So, because of that, I am requesting an addition of one full-time paraprofessional, added to the budget. The increased need will provided both in like our inclusion settings, pull-out settings, or substantially separate type programs like PACE, again, based on student need, which is how we always do stuff, and obviously, that comes through the team model, the IEP special education model, and. And what we see is a rising need for kids' social-emotional functioning and behavior. So in addition to that, I'm requesting a part-time director of counseling and behavioral management, a .5 BCBA, Licensed Applied Behavioral Analysis, and a .5 Research Behavioral Technician.
Donna, just for everyone, both out here as well as in here, what does PACE stand for and what does BCBA stand for?
So I don't know off the top of my head what the acronym PACE stands for, honestly. It is our...
Practical Academic Curricular Experiences.
It's our practical...
Thank you.
Yep.
And if BCBA is a...
Board certified.
Board certified behavioral analysis.
And out, yeah, there you go.
We hear this stuff all the time, so we don't think about it, and it's like, I don't know what that is, right?
And the LABA is like a Massachusetts licensure thing around Applied Behavioral Analysis.
Can I just say, we currently don't have in district of any of these...
We contract for our behavior, behaviorist, a part-time person, so through program area collaborative.
And would this request be in addition to that, or...
It's my understanding, it's in addition to the hours that we have currently. The hours that are in our contract are solely for students' IEP services, so consultations that are in the A grid of IEPs, so...
So this, so it might be direct services, or...
Right now, all of our services are in a consultation model.
Okay.
Our LABA.
Would, would this, well, I guess it would be by the team process. I was just wondering if that, if it's possible, they, we might have B-grid services, like inclusion services, based on this addition or not?
So the way I'm seeing it is kind of like a spectrum.
Okay.
So like, if kids need it, we have that resource in the building, and if kids, you know, don't have it on a special education IEP or 504, but we know they need it, that we'd have access to that when appropriate.
Okay.
Just to kind of build capacity of the supports in place for students.
Just a little history, just quickly, that based on a previous grant, we had a model where we had oversight by a behaviorist, and then RBTs working under that, that person, so that they were, the BCBA or LABA was creating kind of plans and behavioral intervention. And then the RBTs were doing short-term interventions with students and coaching staff, and that was through a grant that is no longer in place. I don't think so.
This is the last slide.
That's right.
So one full-time special education para for the increased numbers would be about $30,000. However, as always, when we think about resources within the district and the shift in resources that can happen, this could be a potential in district shift. So it may not be a budget item, with shifting student needs. A half-time coordinator of counseling and behavioral supports to integrate the guidance, the counseling, and the potential behavioral staff, I'm asking, and keep that integration lens there, as well as thinking like about the 7-12 model, right? So we have continuity as we work through these pieces. So I think that I am very involved with the counseling department, but I do think that someone who can really focus on it and have that more of a bird's eye view will be really important. I think that, when I think about a director of counseling, and when I think about social-emotional functioning at all, I, not at all, I think about it a lot, but I think about it as like a road, right? So if the road's bumpy, it takes us longer to get someplace, right?
Yeah.
And if we can smooth out those bumps, right, maybe you don't get rid of the bumps, but if we smooth out the bumps by building better infrastructure, right, we help kids get to the goals better, which ultimately, teaching and learning, right? Learning, right? So I think that these pieces are really important to support students and are, for me, really And then a .5 BCBA, or Licensed Applied Behavioral Analysis, again, to provide increased supports for students potentially in a more restricted program, as well as moderate and students without. So the range, really, all students have needs at different points in their life, and just to be able to be responsive to those needs and not kind of shackled to students that may have a specific plan or something would be important. And then this would be to help implement any behavior plan. So if we're seeing kids, we're trying to understand the function of that behavior, so we can better address it and target it. And then we want an implementation, so that we can help the teachers manage some of these plans, and then with the hope that if we understand the function, we can address the behaviors while we also concurrently in the counseling department work on skills, and then we build students to more success, right? And then we all feel good about our job. Questions?
So I guess mine's kind of like a little bit broader on, if we are consulting, using consultants for some of these positions, why aren't we looking to bring it all in-house? Like, how much?
Sure. So the, the current level of need outlined in IEP warrants a part-time person. So with a part-time person consulting, we don't have to be the benefits piece to it. If we are to bring somebody full-time on staff for more than 20 hours, there would be a benefit associated with that. It looks like that's the direction that you see each of the presentations moving in. But I think it's in addition to the consultation that we would still be...
But the potential across five buildings...
So if you saw the elementary and obviously, middle school, high school to come, but there appears that they're all looking for some sort of part-time behaviorist per building. So the contract we have now is per hours, and it's based on grade services in a student's IEP. The previous grant that I talked about, the, which we always consider a great, nice-to-have, was more that consultation. We had a referral system where we were referring students that were struggling through our IST process, bringing in that behaviorist, and then that RBT to go out and implement an intervention. So it would be on top of that, so...
Can I, I do have a follow-up, though, because I think what I was hearing, Alice, and say, in a similar question, if we're looking for half-time people throughout the district, would it be easier to get a couple of full-time people in the district that is then shared across buildings?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. I just, I think it's easier to hire, too.
It seems like, like, you know, from the elementary presentation, you know, it's a programming change model that, and then this is a kind of a global, this isn't a program change, but it seems that the need is shifting towards needing behavioralists in town all the time, that, you know...
Correct. In addition to the required services that we already provide, right? But as a resource in the district, yeah, that's the direction that I see the presentations going.
Yeah, and then, you know, whether or not the model gets, you know, the full-time, part-time ends up on somebody's grid, that's, you know, I don't know. I don't want to short us if these are, you know, changing needs of students that we are moving with them.
Can I just sort of ask a follow-up? So the, so what we're saying is currently, there's 65 kids that need special education services, and then what, you're anticipating 78?
Yes.
While enrollment's going down?
So just to, yeah, so 65, just to be clear about where the data point comes from. When I did this presentation last year, there was 65 students anticipated coming in, right? So that can kind of go up and down, like, right? And now, this time of year, again, looking at my current special ed numbers, and looking at the three elementary schools based on their IEPs, we're anticipating 78.
Yeah.
Okay. So the, the numbers are going up while the enrollment's going down, which is kind of interesting, an interesting trend.
And it seems like it's also, I've heard that from other, it's not necessarily just Pembroke, it's across the board.
It's a state, so you'll probably remember in my student services, and you'll see it again, that it's risen by about a percent each year across our district and the state.
Because I'm just looking at the elementary one, and for the program, they're looking for one full-time RBA, RBT, and then a half-time BCBA, LBA, and then a half-time social worker, but then also, as their tier one was the RBT. So I'm wondering, is it possible to be looking into hiring a full-time that does half their time at this potentially new...
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
Yes.
And it'd be savings to do that.
Yeah.
Right. As you know, they, everyone's presenting, as Aaron always says, in a vacuum, so if we put it all together, what does that look like? We need 1.5 or whatever.
Yes. So clearly, the need, but like, I guess my question is, is what is the nice-to-have versus required?
So right now, we're at required, so we have a certain amount of hours that we contract for our LABA in the future. The recommendations, that that's something the committee goes with, those would be in addition to help support behaviors currently, not necessarily in a child's IEP, so...
I, I think that, so what I was hearing, just kind of to get to the point, though, Sue, is I don't know if any of these are really a nice-to-have, they seem to be a little more significant than that.
Yeah, right.
I, to your point, I don't know if it's mandated, but I actually looked at it, so I looked at both your numbers and Mark, your numbers that are coming, they're almost identical. So from 1718, where your number started, enrollment's down by 27.8 percent. The high school in the same period's down 25.2 percent. And then from 2020, your numbers are down about 17, yeah, 17 percent, and high school's 15 percent, and it's year-on-year, numbers are down 3 percent. Enrollment, just to be very clear, this is not a Pembroke issue, right? Enrollment across the Commonwealth is down. There's a population shift outside of the state, but to your point, even though enrollment's dropping, the special education needs of our children are increasing. Much of this becomes an unfunded mandate for local cities and towns, right? So there's, it's millions and millions of dollars. I did read an article in the Globe over the weekend, that they're starting to look at the funding model. It's going to take a while for that to happen, but, so, I don't know that this is a have-to-have, but I also don't know that it's a nice-to-have, right? It's somewhere sort of in the middle. And I think what I heard you say is, the needs are growing, the number of kids needing services are growing. At some point, we're going to have to address it.
I think it's going to cost more money later if we don't do this now.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would see it by having some better fluidity in that thing with this, it allows it to meet earlier, which maybe can...
And keep kids in district.
Which is more lenient, you know, like, your work, right?
But I also think this is the challenge ultimately, that this committee and the committees that represent the 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth are all going to have, because if you look at the governor's proposed budget, it was very specific about a hold on local aid and, and local funding, and Chapter 70 funding, and sort of other things. So the monies that were there are no longer there. So there are more demands, but the pie's not growing. And this is where our job gets hard, right? It's also why we're here. But this is why this is important, to understand the why behind the ask is, I think, critical. So, thank you.
And just to be clear, these are your priority pieces, this table, right?
Because there's no tier on yours.
Yeah.
That's why.
Got it.
They're all tier one, that's really what I heard.
Yeah.
It's not a nice-to-have, it's a tier one.
What you saw at the elementary level is they asked for a full-time math interventionist, but if they can't have that, they'll take a half-time, yeah.
It is.
Donna, you're going to use the mic.
I think the messages they get are a really important message about value, and the value we show them by how we support them.
And you, you know, build those skills for independence that are then setting them up for success in high school. And, you know, the longer you're feeling unsuccessful, the worse it is to come back.
Yeah, agreed.
Any final questions for Donna? We do have the high school presentation also.
One question is just about, you know, having, having somebody full-time versus half-time. Do you have a, I don't know, do you see a benefit either way that you want to name?
If I get a half-time person, I will be very, very happy.
Oh, I just meant, so sorry.
And I feel like, you know, there's enough flexibility in the middle school with the rotating schedule and stuff, that I can absolutely feel like I am addressing the needs.
Let me clarify. I meant having the half-time person be like contracted, so that they'd be between another building and yours, versus just a half-time person. Like, do you have a preference at all? No?
We all play really well together.
Awesome.
Yeah, we all share.
Thank you.
We understand, like, right? We all, we all know that all of our students are going to walk across the stage, right, in Pembroke High School, so.
Yeah.
It all, it all feeds in the same place, so...
Perfect.
Thank you, Donna.
And I understand your challenge, right?
Yeah.
And the finances, I appreciate that part of it. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to see what happens next. She's an expert now.
I don't know if the keyboard would help, but if not, what I would do is, what's that? Yeah, all right. If we can't get it up, Mark, I would just read off of what you have.
Well, Taylor slipped me on the cover of this.
She did? Oh my gosh, she is on the cover.
There you go, you got it, at the bottom, on the bottom left, try it again. There you go.
Hey, Mark, why don't we just, we'll go right off the paper, it's fine. That's, yeah, I would just go right off your paper. We all have it.
You can sit at your seat and do it.
I'm happy to put it up with him on that.
No, no, it's okay.
That would be awkward.
Because they don't, these all get posted up on the website the next day, just in case anybody wants a copy, so...
It's the 26th, right?
All right. Well, I'm sorry about that.
Not your fault.
Thank you very much. So just about the agenda, it's really three brief steps. I'm going to review the enrollment and class size data, since the requests are linked directly to that. And so, once I review the data, I'll go to the priorities for the budget, and then I'll have a rationale for each one of those. Some of this may seem familiar, because some of it was part of my request for last year as well. So you'll see the 10-year historical enrollment, and that same decline that has taken about each of the past, at least nine years I've been here, this is my ninth presentation here, and Dawn's enrollment numbers mirror ours very much. So this year, we're at 685 students. I would anticipate next year would be down around 600 in maybe 70 or 60 in that, in that area there. Our class sizes, however, they're not going down, we've had some reductions in the past, and so, you know, those numbers are certainly, they speak to teaching and learning, right? Productive teaching and learning, those class sizes, for sure. I just want to point out to you, the reason why I have asterisks next to the French and Latin numbers, again, four looks really small, right? I'm not, I get that. Each of those languages has a class, it's like two, and that's what's throwing that down, right? So we only have three French classes anyways. There's 12 and two of them, and then two and one of them, that brings that, those numbers down. All right. The Latin, this year, we had difficulty replacing a Latin teacher, so we went online, and...
Woohoo!
Outstanding, outstanding.
Look at you, with our powers combined.
I'll swipe away, one more. All right, keep going.
Next one.
I'm sorry, my phone.
This is great.
All right.
Good his teamwork. Good job!
Thank you.
Good to go.
So the Latin numbers are down, you know, in large part because we were unable to hire a Latin teacher in the online world, as predicted was not, you know, as good of a model for certain students, all right? So that's why I have those asterisks there. Okay, Donna, thanks. And so then, these are the budget priorities for which I'm asking this year, much like Donna, and we talked about, you know, she asked for a half-time director of counseling, I have a full-time director of counseling up there, and so is there a possibility to share that staff? I would certainly suggest that there is. But I do think it's important, and I said this last year as well, that we have someone up there to help support our counseling staff. up there to help support our counseling staff. The numbers are increasing in terms of students who need their support, not just for college admissions, but for the day-to-day, getting through the day kind of things. I would incorporate the adjustment counselors underneath the umbrella of the director of counseling. In the old model, back in the seventeen, eighteen year, my era Mirbach was our director of counseling, he was just for the guidance counselors, okay? What I'm suggesting is we, the staffers who absorb the adjustment counselors as well. There's a direct connection between our counseling staff and other support programs in the building, our compass program, ARC. They certainly have a leg in the special education team, team roles there as well. They play a vital role there, our counselors. So they're in some high-stake meetings, important decisions made there. And so to have one voice up there, streamlining that, ensuring consistency throughout all counseling services, I think is really important.
One, one quick question.
Yeah.
The ARC, what does that stand for just for?
So ARC is our Academic Resource Center. It's for general education students. Think about it as a learning center for gen ed kids.
Yeah.
If you're struggling and we're trying all kinds of, it's a tier-two intervention strategy.
Yeah.
Comes out of our academic support team meetings. If a student happens to have a study hall, or in some cases, we would actually take a lab and elect if it was that, if it was necessary, and they go there and get some support, some executive functioning, and then some guided, kind of like a watchful eye over a student in a study hall, rather than sitting on their own in a typical study hall.
Yeah. Having them motivation.
Yeah, exactly, right. Keep them on track, tracking their work, communicate with teachers, you know, exactly. Also asking for a full-time special education teacher. We currently have six inclusion special education teachers. And we co-teach eight classes at the high school, right? Four at the freshman level and four at the sophomore level, English, math, social studies, science, angels grades. What's happened, though, over the past three or four years is, in the sophomore level in particular, to co-teach the sophomore math and the sophomore science, it's becoming more complicated because there are two different, divergent pathways for them. As a sophomore, you could be in math, for instance, in honors algebra two, which we would not co-teach. But you could be in CP chemistry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, CP geometry, or you could be in CP two AIM two. And the need to co-teach both algebra one and, oh, I'm sorry, geometry and AIM two is becoming a reality for us. We don't have the staff to do that. Same thing in the science world, right? The sophomore track, you could either be in honors chemistry or CP chemistry or CP physical science. Those two CP courses, I'd like to be able to co-teach both of them. And so that need is brand new because those courses and that, those pathways are kind of new, right? I also am anticipating that there could be an increase in sub-separate classes that require a full-time special education teacher. And a sub-separate class is based, driven by need and student services on an IEP. And it's a, you know, a class of three or four that modifies, you know, a CP two-level class even a little bit more for our most challenging learners. You know, we have, we have a few opportunities, or we have a few students who identified right now who this year are not in a sub-separate class, who next year may benefit from that. It's a team decision, but we're just thinking ahead about that possibility, which is why I'm looking for a full-time special education teacher. I'm also looking for, asking for a part-time, a point-five American Sign Language teacher, depending upon what happens with our graduation requirements. If world language is going to be a requirement for all of our students, a two-year world language requirement, I'm thinking about students who have language-based challenges and would, an American Sign Language course be a way for those students to meet that graduation requirement?
Love that.
Yeah, I think it's, well.
Actually, you love that.
Yeah, I, I very much love it. My daughter does ASL, so I'm.
We are also asking for a point-four business teacher. And again, point-four is really to teach two classes, okay? Right now, we run, or we have one point-four FTE dedicated to our business offerings. That's one teacher, and then another teacher teaches four, two classes. That's Maryone Gates, who was our pathways coordinator. Because of the growth of our pathways program, we're looking to free her up and make her a full-time coordinator. And I'm asking for a point-four business position then to absorb those classes. And then finally, I've asked this before, I wonder if you made a comment before about, it was you Allison, about if we don't fund it now, it's going to cost a lot more later. I have in the past several years asked for twenty-five thousand dollars in extracurricular lines. It's now about thirty-five thousand dollars. Because, and I'll explain the rationale of that in another slide.
I liked what you did there. Sorry, that was just because it was funny.
Trying to refrain from commenting.
I'm not laughing at you now.
Again, just to drill down then on the director of counseling position, it does align with additional goals of academic achievement. As I said before, much has changed since we eliminated the director of guidance in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. We have had a reduction in force, so we're down to three guidance counselors from the four we had. There's an increase in economic pressures, as we all know, student achievement, college admissions. I think the sense of urgency that our students feel, the pressures that our students and their families feel for that is real, and that in turn kind of gets placed on our counselors. There's an increase in the social emotions of our students, that's undeniable. I'm sure you heard that from each of the principals, not just this year, but in the past years. Our adjustment counselors therefore have larger casos than they ever have. The advent of our compass program, the increase in educational plans that require development, implementation, and monitoring and review. You said that when you're talking about Donna, her presentation, that the numbers are going up. If you look, I'll have a slide with mine as well. They're going up, you know, by a percent each year, but over seven or eight years, that adds up and it takes a toll. And there's an increased need then in the informational programming that our counselors present and deliver to our students as well. So our tight-in-time seminars, our guidance seminars. This last week, we met with the juniors. Next week, we're meeting with the seniors. We meet with the freshmen during the year. You know, those grade-level seminars and the information that's delivered there is really important. And having a director of guidance who can be on the cutting edge of what those, those programs should look like, I think is really important.
Mark, I have a question on that, though. And you're wearing me down, right? I know you came to Austria, you were wearing me down, I would say. But, you know, when I look at seventeen, eighteen the last time, I remember when we did that reduction. But given the enrollment drop and the enrollment shift, do you still think it's needed because the needs, again, smaller population, greater need? I do think the drive to get into post-high school programs, whether it be the two- or four-year program or specific schools or what have you, there's a lot more that needs to be done. But is that, does that kind of make up for the fact that there's fewer kids?
That's, that's my opinion. That, that's what I was trying to get at, that slide right there, that needs have increased. The pressures, and it's not just now two- or four-year schools, right? Our post-secondary education planning now more than ever, because the costs of education really has to get to those students that are going to the workforce. And this year, we were bringing in union representatives from IBW and HVAC.
I was just going to ask that, yeah.
Right, we're doing that. And so, again, that takes time to make those connections, right, with those unions.
Are you able to guide kids to the plumbing programs? And to your point, the apprenticeships and the electrical programs, I assume through the union, absolutely.
Right, and so the word guide, the verb guide is, what we're doing is, at least we're trying to, we're trying to provide access to them there, right? We're trying to let them know, this is what's available and here's how you access it. I do think, though, that we have room to grow there. And guide is where I kind of want to get to, you know? We have, we have been lucky enough to reach out to local members of those unions that we've had. We have had already two come in and meet with our kids during tight-in-time. I want to expand that.
That's great.
I want to be able to take kids to, there's a program in Eastern, it's connected to the invoc school, I believe, that's a night program, adult education, night program, plumbing, HVAC. You know, it's, it costs money, there's schooling there, you know, the kids, it's a commitment for kids, but it's a wonderful avenue for them to get into those traits. We've not been able to, to bring that to our kids' attention much in the past. We are starting to do that now. So to answer your question, the long answer I'm giving you is, yeah, I do think that we have a smaller population, fine. We have fewer counselors to match that.
Yeah.
But that smaller population, I think, has, it just has greater needs, it's just.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
We just need more eyes on them.
So that would be under this umbrella then?
I'm sorry?
That was all under the umbrella of the, the driver council.
Yes, yes, all of this, correct, yep. In fact, I have another slide to, to defend the request.
Tell us even more.
You go ahead, yeah.
But wait, there's more.
And so those are just the numbers of the students that require supports at the high school, okay? Just to give you an idea. And, you know, so, so right now, this year, a hundred and fifteen students are covered under the spread umbrella in our building. A hundred and fifteen out of six hundred and eighty-five, so that's about seventeen percent. This year, that's a one percent increase. And so again, in, in a vacuum, in a silo, a one percent increase might not justify the position. But what I'm saying to you is, if you go back and look at my presentations over the past several years, it's one percent, one percent, three percent last year, one percent. It adds up, and so now we're at whatever it is, seven or eight percent over the past four or five years, and that matters. The Bible four increases are the same, alright? Sixty-seven students are on Bible four plans, I've got it broken down by grade there. Our ELL services are there and they're not going anywhere. So I also then talk about a hundred and twenty students right now receive counseling via our adjustment counselors as part of a required service. That's not counting the students who aren't on plans, who have had a death in the family or have experienced some sort of difficulty, and they pick them up along the way. Those hundred and twenty students are usually on a one-by-seven-by-thirty cycle, right? That's one meeting, thirty minutes every seven days. That's a lot of kids who have a required service.
Right, so there's, there's that piece of students that are required by a document, and then there's a whole other set of students that need support.
Who need help.
Because maybe there's a divorce.
Stuff happens. That's correct.
A death in the family.
Because they're high school students.
That's correct.
Yeah, or just a person in general, yeah.
Right. So we also have seventy-one students who have been through our compass program in some capacity this year. And so our compass program services kids in tiers. We place them in tier one, tier two, and tier three. And the tier one students are the ones who are coming back from a physical ailment, and they usually are there for the least amount of time. I had surgery, I had mono, I've had concussions. And once they are recovered and they're caught up, they're out, okay? The tier-two kids are the students who come back perhaps from a mental, a mental illness, and maybe they've been hospitalized, maybe not. And many of those students eventually develop some, some grit or some strategies, and they move out, however, the tier-three, and you guys have supported this, and I appreciate the funding for that. We're allowing kids who, who do return with mental health challenges, who just, they're, they're not fixed, right? They, they need a long-term support for the remainder of the school year. So seventy-one kids at some point have been in and out of that program, and we're halfway through the school year. A lot of them are tier one, and I'm not trying to skew that data, alright? A lot of them are tier one. As you know, this year, I think most of you know, the flu and other illnesses are running rampant throughout the high school, and a lot of kids have gone out four or five days in a row for those things. And then thirty-three students have been in the ARC program in some way, shape, or form this year, while we're halfway through the school. And so the kids who need support are out there. I think it justifies the request.
And I think, I, I know what you meant when you were talking about for tier-three, but it was like, you know, those kids have needs that are extending beyond a, a small amount of time.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's correct.
For the tier-three.
Yeah, and so what they have then is really, they have, they just have access throughout the course of the year. The goals will always come to school on time and go to their classes each year one, but we know that sometimes they'll get to school at seven-thirty-five and not be in a good place.
Right.
And so compass is a soft landing for them until they get regulated, and then they go about their day, and then all of a sudden, it's eleven-thirty. And some, you know, they're struggling, and, and okay, they come back, they access our services, and then they hopefully get back to where they, they need to be.
Yeah.
So that's what a tier-three student has access to, and I'm very thankful that we have that.
Yeah, got it, thank you.
The, the other requests, I go into some, some detail in terms of the rationale of this two more, the specification piece, I kind of already talked about that, so I don't mean redundant here, the co-teaching of the classes, and perhaps some, some pullouts that are coming along. And then, of course, the ask for additional funding for our extracurricular activities. The number of groups that are not funded has risen to thirteen, including the Bible Club, thank you very much, Ms. Volante. We weren't able to run unified team sports this year, so.
Mark, was that, was that grant-funded initially?
It was, and that's dried up. And then the year before that, the last year, the staff members did volunteer. It's just a lot of work. It's a lot of work to not be able to place a stipend to it, you know?
And the young Dems.
What's the dollar for you on that, if you don't mind me asking?
Don't forget us.
I thought Ms. Kelly told me it was about three grand.
Three grand last time, yeah, that's what the, that's what the grant was for.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that's just what became the stipend was, you know, so.
There's also the young Dems. I also am advising the club.
Yes, I apologize.
Don't forget me, just kidding.
That's up there, that's on the slide.
Oh, is it? Oh, I can't read.
So Unifig, you needed, you need additional funding to keep it going?
We do.
So what do you think it would take to, I mean, I, that breaks me heart.
So just for the, for the stipend would be three grand, bus transportation for all the, you know, the away games, you know, uniforms, you know, I would say five or six thousand for that one particular club. And then these other clubs could use a little bit of love too, you know? So the math team is funded, but they take buses to Duxbury High School and Mossfield High School. And where does that money come from, right? You know, the mock trial team has to hang them to district court, you know, four times a winter, right? And so, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
It's okay.
You want to finish? Okay. One piece that some folks are getting together around is the Pembroke Education Foundation. We're still trying to figure out taxes, but I do wonder about if there's a potential for this kind of thing, that's more like supplementary, if we could help with that in terms of funding.
Sure, and I'd be certainly very thankful of that kind of support. I guess what I'm saying is, I'd just like to have it part of the budget so that it's not, I mean, I don't know.
I see what you mean.
A yearly thing, right?
Yeah.
PEF, you know?
I see what you mean, yeah, yeah.
That's stop at some point, you know? There's just a lot of kids who are involved in clubs, you know, there's thirteen of them sitting up there on the board there. That's a lot of students. And, and as I said, each of, of the, of the past few years, Dave Ricks has, Dave Ricks is our extracurricular coordinator. He has developed a fee structure, a fee restructuring that would fund that without there being any increase to the budget. Now, I know we might want to put that on the backs of families, right? Which is why I'm putting it here.
I see what you mean.
But there are alternative ways to generate that revenue.
So I'm just curious what that would look like, you know? How, how would you?
So we shared it two years ago as part of the fee conversation, and I'm happy to share it when we get to the fees again.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
We've talked about a fee for things like this for a while now, to try and bridge the gap, you know, type of thing. So, and we, as you all know, right, as part of the budget process, we have a whole discussion centered on fees. Because I think it's important to understand what we're asking people to pay for together, and not sort of one by one by one. It's a lot. It gets, it gets a lot of money.
It does.
Awesome. Any other questions for Mark? Any other questions for Mark? Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last one, man. Thank you so much. Great job, Dawn.
So next, under my report, is a consideration for second read of approval and approval of the PHS Program of Studies. So in your packet, you have a summary of the edits. In your electronic packet, there was a full redline version of the Program of Studies. For the sake of paper, we did not print out reams of that, but the summary is, is there. I'll turn it over to Mary about to highlight anything that you all may have questions about. The only thing that's different from when we took it as a first read is that EdSub and PolicySub met last week to talk about the wording around competency determination. So you can see that proposal language is in red on the bottom of the first page going into the second page. In your packet, I also gave you samples of what other school districts are looking at as far as language. And we took a look at that at EdSub last week and, and tried to make sure that we were kind of covering all of the things that other folks were covering as well, but that they made sense for the direction that we were moving in.
So we still have to have a conversation about what Pembroke wants to do as far as MCAS requirements.
So that's the competency determination?
Yeah.
That's the language?
That's what this is. This is the MCAS, just not MCAS. This would be what they have to do.
So this is what the current handbook, what the current Program of Studies looks like? We'd be redlining all of the MCAS and putting in the language.
Right, right. But I thought we were going to actually have a discussion at the committee level about whether or not we wanted to retain an MCAS requirement or not retain an MCAS requirement at the local level. That's a determination that ultimately we would.
Sure, and so EdSub had that conversation, and this is their recommendation for competency determination.
And I know, I think it's 61 percent of the town voted to have it not be a requirement in Pembroke. So that was one of the data points we used.
To not have MCAS, no.
No, no, no.
Yes, we are proposing that MCAS is not.
A graduation requirement.
It's a graduation requirement. We're going with what the state has put out and what a number of other.
Neighboring districts.
Districts are doing.
I think Marshfield is when we modeled it mostly after because it was the most well-written. But they're all very, very similar.
They're all, they're all using the same language that has been released by DESI.
That's what the MCAS was.
So thoughts, questions on the Program of Studies?
So one thing I just want to point out, since we have an audience here, we are looking to model closer to the. Mass core, thank you. Requirements to make it a requirement starting with the incoming freshman class, so the class of 2029, to require there be two years of world language and one semester of visual or performing arts. So part of, I think, the budget process is also making sure that we have the capacity for that. And part of the numbers that we looked at is what percentage of students currently meet that? You know, not that they have to, but just kind of to give us an idea, because this is, I think the last time a change was made, what year? I think it was like 2016 or earlier where there was the, I forget which one it was, you guys had to strike.
We had an adjustment with science.
Yeah, there was a change in the science. So I just want to point that out, that that was something that was proposed to better align what were our requirements are to graduate with the requirements that many other towns have, and also to get into most colleges you have to have.
Right, and we talked about that pretty extensively when it came as a first read.
Yes, I just want to make sure, since we have a captive audience.
And I know that another conversation we had was about the potential for increasing the visual and performing arts requirement to one year, but later, because we want to make sure that the staffing needs are intentional and that we don't have to, like, move staff or anything like that unnecessarily. Want to see the trend of enrollment and then revisit it for adding another semester potentially in a couple of years.
But right now, it's two separate semesters.
Two semesters, yeah, yeah.
Which is one year, but it's two separate semesters. You could take like a.
No, it's one semester.
It's one semester.
Right now, we're asking.
Two credits, got it, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so in the future, it would potentially be two semesters, but not right yet.
Okay, so next year, we would.
I think the idea is to see the capacity and see.
Right, so the goal wasn't to add staff, right?
And it's, and it's not like the freshman year, they're going to do this. This is going to be spread out. They have four years.
Correct.
To do the art.
One semester.
And to be clear, the mass core requirement is.
Is one year.
One year, so, yeah.
But I don't think we have the capacity currently.
I think our, our optimal rollout would be to, to try it with one semester, see what that looks like, see if we are staffed appropriately for that. It looks like we will be able to manage that with the staff we have right now. We are not looking, as Erin just said, to add staff right now in this particular area so that we can try to gauge the interest, gauge where that should go, and then make a better decision if we want to increase that requirement down the road. We'll have more data that's a little bit more reliable once it becomes a requirement.
And the capacity for the world language is there.
Is also there.
And would add to the lower, and potentially the lower enrollment of some of those classes, because if it's a requirement, hopefully kids start taking some of those. And my understanding is Latin, you guys are going to be hiring, that is.
We're going to post, right? I mean, it's still part of our current budget. Obviously, we still have a ways to go in our budget cycle before we get to our fiscal year.
But, you know, because obviously, if we're making this a requirement, we're going to have to offer classes. We're going to have to have the capacity of choice for students to.
Right, we're currently 71 percent of our students are meeting the, the goal for world language, and 77 of, 77 percent are meeting the goal for visual and performing arts. So we're confident with the staffing that we have, that we will be able to address the students that need those classes.
To be clear though, and, and because this is important, adding this requirement is not going to require additional dollars be spent with new staffing.
No. During Mark's presentation, he added the ASL. That would be a nice to have. It can all be absorbed with what we currently have.
Yeah, yeah, and I think making it a requirement, having that additional option for language is, is helpful, but it will also depend on students that enroll as well.
And so it's, you know, we're saying, you know, competency determination will be based on completing coursework equivalent to mastering the concept and skills in grade 10 English, blah, blah, blah. What is, like, is there a GPA requirement for each class? Or like, like what does mastering the concept mean? Like, how are we measuring that?
Successfully passing the class with a 60 percent.
60 percent, okay.
And well, I think there might be more guidance coming out from the state, but we didn't want to make something up that was additional until we get more guidance, so we just left it.
The governor has convened a council of representatives from all over the Commonwealth to come together to create the new competency determination and the language that they will use in the future. So we're in this sort of murky period where we're using the bare bones of what has been given to us by the state.
So I'll, I'll fall on the sword. I think it's a mistake. I think it's a big mistake. I, I think, well, MCAS isn't perfect. It requires, it, it, it has a requirement, it sets a bar. It requires a standard. It makes sure that a specific standard is ultimately going to be met and will be met. And honestly, what you just said worries me even more, because what we said is, we're going to do away with this, but there's no real standard ultimately that's going to replace it, other than you pass a course at 60 percent. So I, I would, I would ask this committee to reject this. Because my view is, until there is a bona fide standard that is at least at the level that MCAS was in order to achieve a high school diploma in Pembroke, or better, that you keep the standard. And at the end of the day, I get it, right? I get it, it's not perfect, but this basically says that you complete grade 10 English, Algebra I and Geometry, and one of the following science course requirements, biology, chemistry, or physics. You know, we just talked about how competitive and how difficult getting into some of these institutions of higher learning are. I'd rather, I'd, I'd rather our standard either be higher than where it was, or it be kept at the same level until there's a recommendation that comes out that can be proven to be better or higher. I think we're cheapening our diploma.
So I, I hear what you're saying. The only thing I would just remind you of is that the MCAS tests are based on those courses.
No, I, I understand, but they're also demonstrating to the extent you can. I mean, we've had discussions for years around this table, right? That test is different every year. The cohort of kids that take it is different every year. But it, it, and, well, the data is still going to be there, because the MCAS doesn't go away, let's be clear, right? The MCAS is not going away, so there is data that we can still get and learn from. But keeping it as a standard also heightens the requirement. It heighten, it heightens the requirement on teaching and learning. It heightens the requirement to ensure kids are meeting a very specific standard as opposed to, to passing with a 60. It, it is a different and a higher level requirement. I mean, it just is.
And to your point, I, just to follow up with that, like, we're saying, okay, 60, but we don't even have a list of what, like, what is the requirement, for example, for grade 10 English? Like, what are the concepts that need to be learned?
So the concepts for grade 10. The concepts for grade 10 English are based on the Massachusetts frameworks for grade 10 English. So those are all, that is how our courses are built at the high school. They're all built off those frameworks that the state has developed over, you know, the past, since Ed reform started in 1995, 1993.
And so what would we be doing to ensure that our kids are actually learning that? Like, so we don't have the MCAS now, so now what are we doing to ensure that that was actually what was taught? Is, you know, the mass core?
In fair, in fairness, if, if I may, it's okay, right?
Sure, yeah.
Just because, God knows, I've think I've been around this argument for a really long time. I want to be really careful, right? Because what's getting taught in those courses is going to be the same thing that's been taught in those courses since the last time the frameworks were redone, which candidly could have been six months ago. But, and I say that in jest, but in, in reality, right? So everything that we're doing wraps around the mass framework to ensure that a Massachusetts diploma does have some consistency. What I'm saying is we had that before, and we had MCAS, right? What we've just done is we've eliminated one standard here in Pembroke and across the Commonwealth, and said, we're okay eliminating that standard and only having, it's a lower standard. Hitting this at a 60 percent level is a lower, in my opinion, solely in my opinion, is a lower standard.
Reads checks and balances.
I feel strongly that you need both of those standards, or we lessen our diploma.
I, I, I would say, you know, we looked at nine other school districts, and only one of them is keeping MCAS. The nine other school districts that we found examples from, which are the only ones, I think, that had them out at the time.
Right, and I think it's Duxbury that's looking at the idea of keeping MCAS as a standard. That hasn't been decided yet either. Everybody's kind of in the same boat that we're in, trying to make the best decision during this period of sort of the unknown period.
And either way, we have to come up with a competency determination. It's not an option to not do that, so we have to come up with a, a choice either way. But I would hate to not honor what the people in the town voted for. I would be open to discussing raising the, the average, but I don't, I would absolutely say no to going against what the people in the town voted for, because I know I'm, several family members, you know, of my own and a lot of other people who have disabilities, and, you know, they passed all their classes, and then MCAS was something that just kept them from graduating, and it was really awful. So I think there's a reason why people voted the way that they did, and I want to make sure that we honor that.
But I also want to, I also want to point out, right? You, you guys started out saying 61 percent of the, of the districts did not keep the MCAS requirement, which means 39 percent did.
No, sorry, I meant 61 percent of Pembroke voted to remove MCAS as a graduation requirement.
That, that, that's a totally different.
But in terms of what the towns that we looked at, it was, uh, seven of, no, no, no.
I included that in the packets.
Eight of 10 said, we're getting rid of MCAS as a requirement, and had similar proposals to what we proposed. So 80 percent.
So I'm on DESI's website, so, and even Duxbury, which is the one that's considering it. I think we're looking, we need to look at two different things. There's a graduation requirement, and there's a competency determination. So we, my understanding of the way the, the, the question was worded is we can no longer require it as part of the competency determination. So I think what Duxbury and a couple of towns are looking, and this is where it's all still kind of, but we could make it part of the graduation requirement, my understanding is based on that. So we have a graduation requirement that is in here, and, you know, to ha, and that's what we're changing for the class of 2029. So I fully agree that the town spoke and, you know, the state spoke. It has been removed as the ability, so I don't have any. There's no, no, nothing that makes me want to put it back in at this point. I think that there's going to be some changing things happening. I think there's going to be, you know, the, the guidance that, you know, continues to come out. But I think this, nothing that we're doing tonight is going to affect the current graduating class. This is all for future, because our current graduating class.
Already passed.
Passed. It already has their competency determination. So what we're doing is putting it in paper for the class of 2026 and future. I think based on our graduation requirements, that is a very healthy mass core guided, plus what the state changed, add a, you know, a question.
So are you saying, like, we would still do the MCAS as a graduation requirement, but it wouldn't be part of the competency determination?
That is the way Duxbury.
That's not the way it's written in here.
Correct, but that is.
That's not at all the way it's written in here.
But Duxbury is, I think, from, I, I don't know if they've even gotten to it yet, but they're the only ones of the ones that we've researched that is even talking about continuing to keep MCAS.
10 percent, yeah.
Because I think if there's checks, for me, I feel like if we have checks and balances, and the kids are still required to take MCAS as a graduation requirement, doesn't mean that the, pass it per se, but.
I mean, they have to take it. What's the difference, though?
Have to take it.
Everyone has to take it.
They're still taking it. The MCAS is still happening. We're still going to get the data. It's just not going to, it's not going to make or break.
It's not going to make them not graduate.
And kids, sorry, kids can still retake it as part of the, trying to get the scholarship qualification. Like, if they don't like what they got, they can retake it. That, none of that is going away. This is purely to get a Pembroke graduation diploma. We're saying, what we discussed, is we're adapting to meet more of the mass core requirements, plus we are taking what DESI and many other towns are doing as part of their competency determination. And it's still based on, you know, the, the standards, the framework, and it's, you know, it is 10th grade, but that's what the MCAS are too, you know, kind of seems silly.
That's what they're using, yeah.
But that's what they've been using for however long MCAS has been, and they, you know, and if we're saying to pass a class is, you know, demonstrating mastery of, you know, these, the skills that are required on grade 10 English, Algebra I and Geometry, one of the following science courses, there is in here that, you know, that the final say does come down to the, the principle. The principal shall have the arbitrary for all final decision. So there is still some wiggle room given if there is something. But I completely disagree, like, I would, this is completely, do not support any at continuing to put MCAS as part of the competency or even graduation requirement. I feel very strongly about it.
No, I get it, and I feel equally strongly that it should be there, right? Because, again, I find it interesting that it's Duxbury that's thinking about keeping it. It's one of the, the districts that generally rate pretty high around the Commonwealth, and now they're, they're thinking about keeping it. I, again, to me, I think we're cheapening the diploma without a reasonable replacement. And given what I've heard of, now we're still in squishy places, and the governor's putting a council together to figure out where we are, I don't know why you would remove that until there is something better to replace it. My point of view, my vote, you know, but that is, so I will be voting no on the Program of Studies, which I don't think I ever have. But I do believe that it is really important to keep, to keep a standard and to show that a Pembroke High School graduation, graduation and diploma means that it is met as standard that is higher than what we have here, just my point of view.
I just wonder if there's some sort of a hybrid, because I, I agree with you, we need to have a standard. But I just wonder if there's some sort of a hybrid that we could do for Pembroke where we're still requiring it, but if someone's on a, an IEP or a 504, there's something we can do. You know, because like, really, the issue I think people had is, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is, this is like a state requirement, and every school and teacher was like, you know, wait a minute, now we have to teach to the MCAS. You know, that's almost unfair, especially for kids with special needs of any kind, like, and they can't, they could pass the class, but they can't pass the test, and it made it difficult. Is there some sort of a hybrid thing? Like, can we go back and look and see if there's like, okay, we have, you know, in order to pass, you know, unless you're on an IEP or a 504, you have to pass it.
Kids on IEPs and 504s have passed the MCAS.
Yeah, and they, but I'm just saying, like, maybe there's special circumstances.
I, I also don't think, at least in the, the decade and a half that I've been sitting around this table, I have not heard that it is a massive issue that we have kids not graduating because of the MCAS not being passed. Am I wrong?
No, you're correct.
Right, so.
So how many in Pembroke?
So I just want to be clear that we don't have a slew of kids in Pembroke that aren't graduating because they didn't pass, pass the MCAS. But the problem with what you're saying, though, Sue, I think, is you also have fair, to be really fair to our colleagues, people that are equally as passionate as I am in, in the other way, right? I think Allison has articulated that really well.
And the town.
Right? The, the town voted, the way the, the town voted. We, as a governing body, have to make an ultimate decision.
I think it would be a mistake to reject this. I think we need to pass this. This needs to be able to be put out and presented to students.
David, do you have any thoughts on this?
I've been sitting here watching this go back and forth, and for some people in the audience, I, I don't speak a lot, I have a tendency to listen. I grew up in an educational family. My father was a high school principal. I'm a school teacher by trade. I would take the MCAS personally and flush it down the toilet. I have no use for it whatsoever. That's probably harsh statements. Patrick, I, I do take umbrage with the fact we talk about cheapening a diploma. As I said to my daughter, there's Harvard, there's everywhere else. You know, if you went to Harvard, people go, wow, I went to Harvard, you're great. Nobody cares if you went to University of Wisconsin, Delaware State, you've got a diploma. You worked your butt off. Now, again, I wasn't the smartest kid in school. I had an older brother that was that genius that turned down Dartmouth and Princeton to go to Springfield College, and I followed him there. And people would say to my brother, like, you know, boy, you know, underachiever, you could have been this, you could have been that. My brothers went on to a very successful career. I think I took the tools I had academically. I was not a wizard by. I was not a wizard by any stretch of the imagination. But I took the skills that I had and the diploma that I got from Malden High School in nineteen seventy-nine, so we're going back a ways, from Springfield College in nineteen eighty-three. And I've turned into a pretty damn good career because that was me. We're going to have kids in this school, and I say this with all due respect, we're going to have those overachievers. The kids that want to go to Harvard, want to go to Yale, want to go to Princeton. We're going to have a bunch of middle of the road kids, may go to college, may not, may be successful in business. Then we're going to have a bunch of kids that are going to try their damnedest, but they're never going to be in those other groups. And I think to sit there and try to say to them, because you only got a sixty-one and I got a ninety-three, your diploma is cheaper than mine. You know, I don't see that. I don't want to be Duxbury, I don't want to be Cohasset, I don't want to be Situate, I don't live there, I want to be Pembroke. And I think we've got great kids. I think, pardon the expression, we're doing the damnedest. I think, you know, we have an amazing faculty, amazing administration. I love these people and I'm kind of a passionate speaker when it comes to these things. But at the end of the day, if you show up every day and you work your tail off and the best you can do is a sixty-one or a sixty-five, I'm going to take it. If you can show up every day and get a ninety-nine or a hundred or have a four-point-one CUM, I'm going to take it. But again, I don't think we cheapen the diploma. Again, I have no use for the MCAS whatsoever. I like this, I mean, again, I could throw a couple of what I call grenades. I honestly, looking at these numbers, buy the Latin, buy the French, let's do American Sign Language, let's do something relevant. You know, classes with four kids in them that honestly, what is your practical use of French right now? You know what I'm saying, in my opinion? Latin, I can see if you're going into some kind of sciences or something like that, understanding the human body. Most of those terminologies come from Latin. But we've got some tough decisions to make, people, okay? At the end of the day, we're going to have to probably, you know, make some cuts, make some changes, do whatever. You want to save the program. I'll be honest with you, I'm actually fuming that this unified program got cut off. If any of you have ever been to one of those unified sport games, and I've rattle about this and I apologize, I'm taking probably a little bit too much time.
Go David.
It is one of the greatest moments I've ever seen. Because again, some of those kids, that's the best day they were ever going to have.
Yeah.
Someone's cheering for them, someone's wearing their shirt with a number on it, and I'm watching those parents. Hopefully you're all blessed with wonderful kids that can play sports and play musical instruments and do all sorts of things. Some of these kids have disabilities and challenges. And again, if you get a chance, go to one of those basketball games, do whatever. I'll be honest with you, Mark, if you would give me the funding for that program, what you actually think it takes?
We'll get it.
We'll, we'll get it. If I have to fund it personally, I'll fund it personally. I'm not trying to, you know, impress anybody here, but I think it's that important of a program because that's their day and those kids should be able to get a diploma. They show up every day and they work their tail off. On that, let me quiet, I went off on a bit of a tangent, I apologize.
Yeah, it's fine, I'm glad you did. So I'll cut it off with that and I'm going to ask for a motion to, to take a second read and approval of the PHS Program of Studies as presented.
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Katrina, seconded, seconded, not by Allison. It's been a long night. Yeah, the birthday girl, it's been a long day. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I oppose. Abstained? So it's four of one, Natalie.
Good job, team.
That was a good job, it was a good discussion.
That was a good.
There's nothing wrong with it, that was a good discussion.
David, I might have started crying when you were talking.
I want to, like, is it too late for Unified at the high school? Like, has it already hap, the season already happened?
Yeah, the season's happened.
Okay, so next, then, under my packet, under my report is a transportation update and a piece of language that I want you all to talk about as far as the Springtown meeting warrant. So first off, I know there's been a high level of frustration with the delays associated with transportation across the board. I'm happy to report that today is the first day that we don't, we did not report any afternoon delays, so. Lori Jacobs, our transportation coordinator, meets daily with First Student. Obviously, there have been some challenges, there has been some places where routes have been combined, there's been sub-drivers. Currently, at this moment, we are only one bus driver short. Bus four is still having a sub-driver cover right now. We're looking for a permanent, First Student is looking for a permanent driver for that route. They do have one driver that's awaiting a road test, they do believe that will happen fairly soon and then we should be fully staffed. With that being said, like classroom teachers, paraprofessionals, people that work in your office, illness is a real thing. It, the flu is rampant, so there are times where there is not a sub-driver available. Obviously, we'd like that to be fewer and more far between than what we're experiencing right now. First Student has shared with us that they have a number of drivers that are on extended leaves of absences. That is what the delays you've been seeing have been attributed to. Those leaves end on or about February vacation. So once we come back from February break, we should be in a good place. The expectation is that that last driver floating out there has taken their road test and is on their way to driving for us. At the same time, if you know anybody that's interested in being a bus driver, First Student, I think, is a wonderful employer and is accepting all applications. If Tracy Marino were here, she would tell you it's a wonderful job, she enjoys it quite much. But, you know, First Student has been very transparent. For transparency on our, First Student is, First Student is a vendor to us. We have a contract with them. They are contractually obligated to provide a level of service. I will be the first one to tell you that the level of service we've been provided for the past eight weeks or so isn't what we've contracted for. They are aware of that. You know, obviously, we have choices when we bid our transportation on what vendors we use and don't use. First Student is the only vendor that has ever bid on transportation here in Pembroke. So I don't want people to think that there's a better option out there and that we should be looking. We bid our transportation just about every three years. We went out to bid last year, we're in a three-year contract with First Student, but they are coming to the table to work with us when we have challenges like we've been experiencing these past few weeks. So I know that parents are frustrated, I hear it, I get your messages, Lori is working with folks day in and day out, but I do feel like we're on the upward trend here with bus drivers. So fingers crossed, following February break, there should be little to no disruption to the service level.
Can we put that out to the community, like basically to say like this is what's happening instead of have, I mean, in addition to?
Sure, I can't publicize which routes that people are on leaves of absences because it's identifiable, but.
You know, because instead, I mean, obviously, people get the emails, but to say.
Nobody got one this afternoon.
To say why.
It's a good day.
Absolutely, I know that Lori has responded individually to anyone that's reached out, we can proactively push out.
Be helpful to let people know, like, that it's, we, it's, you know, the broader community be aware of, we know, here's what's happening, here's when we hope it'll be.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
In your packets, you have an overview of the Act Concerning the Safety of Schoolchildren Embarking and Disembarking From School Buses. So what Policy Sub took a look at last weekend is asking for support of the committee to place on the Springtown Meeting Warrant. The verbiage is there, but what it in effect says is that moving forward, we would have the ability to use the surveillance camera on the bus to prosecute, for lack of a better word, those that are disobeying the stop bar. So I want to be one-hundred percent clear, the language is the first step. We can't do anything without the language, but we are not in a place where our bus cameras are even focused on the road, they're one-hundred percent on the bus.
So this is about people driving through.
Past the stop bar.
While, while the lights are on and the alarm is down.
Correct, so obviously, I had a conversation with Chief McDonald just about this. There's things that would need to happen on the police side as far as what a citation would look like. But the first step is getting, is accepting the language at the Springtown meetings.
Council will have to do a review to make sure.
Correct, so this was reviewed already, this is a legal.
It looks very official. I'm reading through, it looks very official.
So there was a law recently passed that enables this to be able to be done. So in order for Pembroke to have the ability to even do this, we have to have this language put into town bylaws or.
And installing cameras and paying for it and all that would happen later.
That would come down the road, I mean, we're not in a place right now.
It's not part of that.
And we talked about how there's twenty-eight buses with First Student and two Pembroke buses. And we currently own and maintain the cameras that are currently on the buses for.
Correct, so the cameras on the buses are a condition of our contract with First Student, not all school districts have cameras on their buses. That is our contract, we supplied the cameras, we own the footage, we own all of that, so it is not a First Student concern, it's a Pembroke concern.
So are you looking for us to approve and direct that this be put on the town meeting warrant for the spring?
Yes.
Yes.
So can I get a motion to accept and approve the school bus camera enforcement systems and Act Concerning the Safety of Schoolchildren Embarking and Disembarking on School Buses and direct that this act be placed on the Springtown warrant in May of 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by David, seconded by Sue. Is there any, are there any other questions or further discussion?
Only that I know this is an issue that bus drivers have talked about before, you know, getting passed and things like that. So I'm, I'm glad to see that we're, you know, making moves to make that happen for student safety.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous, Natalie.
Okay, next is Subcommittee and Liaison Update. So the first Subcommittee update is Long Range Planning. You'll remember, we talked a few meetings back about having an audit or inspection done of our, suspecting, all the right words, of our playgrounds. We started with Habimach, so Long Range Planning took a look at the report that was provided by Safe Solutions, sorry, Safe and Sound Solutions, that's a Pembroke resident, we talked about this before. Obviously, we wanted to get an idea of the scope of what the repairs or replacements would look like for the Habimach Playground. You have in your packet the full report. Long Range Planning met and discussed the different scenarios that were outlined in the report. And we are recommending that we move forward in the CPC grant application for the replacement of the Habimach Playground. I will say that I did submit a placeholder for this because the deadline for CPC applications was February first. I submitted a placeholder and told them that you all were ready to.
Awesome, I was wondering about that.
So can I get a motion?
Can I ask a couple of questions? Do we know how much money CPC has?
So there's different, the CPC is designated into different funds. There's funds associated with historical, there's funds associated with recreation. I did confirm with the Chair of the CPC Fund that there's $400,000 in the undesignated line. So we could absolutely ask for that. In addition, I've had conversations with Lance Kennedy as far as the desire from the rec side to replace and renovate that playground in particular because it gets so much community usage on the weekend with youth. So he is willing to partner on that too. So if it doesn't all come from undesignedated, we can look at some of the funding that's attributed to recreation as well.
And what's the timeline for the other playgrounds?
So next up, you will be checking out Bryantville in hopes that we could go to the Fall Town Meeting for the Bryantville Playground upgrades. In addition, you'll remember that North River Collaborative does rent several classrooms from us at Bryantville and they are also interested in doing, making some upgrades to the playground as well, so we have a partner.
That's great.
And some of that work too.
So just a full disclosure, we're looking at a full replacement.
We're looking at a full replacement of the Habimach Playground.
And bringing it up to.
Correct, and we bring it up to ADA compliance. Obviously, if there is not CPC support for that, there is the scenario where we just replace play structure one and two, which then brings those up to ADA compliance, but I think we should ask for it all and then tailor it back if we have to.
I mean, it truly makes sense to do the whole thing because the whole town uses that for all, every time there's a soccer game or anything going on, the, the kids use that playground, it gets used more than any other playground around, so.
And there's some major safety deficiencies.
It's in really rough shape.
It's in really rough shape.
And so just so that I understand, so the CPC looks at this and they have to accept it before it can go to town meeting?
Correct, they have to.
So is there a way for us to just put this on town meeting if they say no?
No, you have to go through the CPC.
Well, not for a CPC grant, you'd have to ask the town to fund it, right? I mean, you could, a citizen's petition can be done to do that.
When do they decide?
So they scheduled the meetings for their applications following the close of their application process, which was just Saturday. So they did reach out and say they're looking to schedule in the beginning of March.
But after the warrants close.
Okay. One question is, and I think, I think I know the answer to this, for Bryantville, we chose that next because that had maybe the most amount of additional, like, safety concerns versus North? Like, why did we pick, how did we pick the order?
So we picked, I designated Bryantville next, it gets a little bit more community use than our playground here at North. In addition, the idea of having a partner in the funding, I think is a good idea. I think at the end of the day, if we're left trying to figure out just the funding stream for North, that's a much more manageable task than all three of them together.
Got it, yeah.
I think the last time the playground at Habimach was renovated, my twenty-four-year-old turned first grade.
It was the year that the buildings were all remodeled and renovated, so they're twenty-one years old now.
Yeah, I mean, it was a long time ago.
Is there an expectation though, as the other playgrounds are looked at, that safety issues can be addressed as they come up?
Correct, so as you could see from his report, he uses a rating, a one, two, three rating. Obviously, there were some things at Habimach that stood out immediately, so he asked us to change the swing chains. All of those immediate things have happened. If there's a piece of the playground that he is recommending that we not use at all, it's taped off. So those.
And is that good enough, taping it off?
So there's staff out at recess duty, I cannot control what happens when the playground is not monitored on the weekends. But we did talk about putting up the signage about when you're using this playground outside of school hours, you're using that.
And the good news is, we're, this is much more fast-tracked than we originally planned.
Way more.
I feel like this has to be, like, we're, this is.
But that's, it's great that you brought it up though, I mean, I know Allison, you were the one that brought it up and to see it moving so fast is like, it's pretty awesome.
This is, this is a much better timeframe than asking them for funding for audit, so.
So that's trying, well, you're actually giving it done.
Well, no, that's why, that's why I was like, trying not to lose my mind.
And thank you to the community member who did the report.
Yeah, I say.
So grateful that he was willing to do that.
We would be remiss if we didn't thank, that is an amazingly in-depth report. I remember sitting down to read it and I said to Erin, I think it took me forty-five minutes to literally read it and, you know, kind of understand it and picture it, and I said, oh, boy. And it was forty-five minutes later and I said, wow. He did a heck of a job.
Christopher Woods is who it is.
Yeah, thank you.
He did an amazing job.
Sue, say it again.
Christopher Woods, Safe and Sound Solutions.
So thank you, Mr. Woods. So just so that we can move it forward, can I get a motion to approve the CPC grant application for Habimach Playground as presented?
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Katrina, seconded by Allison. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Allison.
Patrick, real quick, I'm sorry, we'd have to speak maybe a town meeting about this kind of, okay, just want to make sure, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And I think we do have to speak.
And one, one more question, is CPC meetings open to the public?
Yes.
Could we go and present why?
So I present, and in the past, a member of Long Range Planning has come with me.
Okay, and so do they see this?
Yeah, I include, that is the application that was submitted.
Perfect.
That is the full application.
Thank you.
The next item is the Spring Warrant Capital Items. We are not a standalone capital request at the town anymore, we do fall under the town capital item. But I did want to talk with you a little bit about what we talked about at Long Range Planning. So we're continuing with our HVAC ask, so we've asked for kind of $300,000 for HVAC upgrades and repairs. We are asking for, similar to last year, $100,000 in curricular materials. You remember, last year, they funded our Envision Math purchase through that, which was great because it helps take $100,000 off of our operating budget. And the third thing that we are asking for, we have, four of our five buildings have PA systems that are at end of life. Habimach's PA system is not currently fully operational, so that is the first one to be replaced, but the vendor has informed us that the next three will be in line. So that funding would allow us over the summer to replace two buildings and then the following summer the next two.
So can I get a motion to approve the Spring Warrant Capital Items as presented?
So moved, second.
So motion by Allison, seconded by Katrina. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous, Natalie.
In your pol, in your packet, you have two policies. The first one is policy JIE. That is a policy that was just looked at in December of 2024, but at the time, we had some pretty solid conversation about Title IX final rule. That is the only policy that has a legal reference of Title IX final rule. The recommendation from Policy Subcommittee is that we're striking that legal reference because it is no longer relevant, which is why I'm asking for a first read and approval as opposed to the process of first read and second read.
So can I get a motion to consider for first read? So we're going to approve it on the first read because it's such a minor adjustment and change? So just to be clear, usually we do a second read on this?
Yeah.
So can I get a motion to consider for first read and approval the updates to policy JIE Pregnant Students as presented?
So moved, second.
Motion by Sue, seconded by Allison. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous, Natalie.
The second policy in your packet is IKF Credit Status and Graduation Requirements. So this is just updating our current policy IKF to include those additional graduation requirements that we spoke of tonight, which is the two years of world language as well as the one semester of visual and performing arts. We also made a couple of grammar changes or align the language more with what our practice is, right? So since you all approved that AP World History course, we wanted to make sure that that was counting as one year of history. We wanted to update the language on the sciences that you can, that you must pass biology and either chemistry or physics before it's a war chemistry or physics. And that we, at Mass Core, as well as our recommendation, is that two years of the world language is in the same language. And to the point of the earlier conversation, that those new graduation requirements. requirements would begin with the classes 2029. So this is just a first read for this week.
Okay. So can I get a, a motion to accept for a first read Policy IKF Graduation Requirements?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Katrina, seconded by Allison. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous, Natalie?
The last thing under Subcommittee Updates is the Vocational Planning Committee. We have not met in a little bit of time, but we are planning a meeting for next Thursday, I believe is where it's going to fall. As many of you know, the vote in the member towns for the South Shore Tech building project was held last Saturday, the 25th. It was voted in favor of in a majority of the member towns and voting public, so the project is moving forward. So we are excited to bring to you all the information associated with what it would look like for Pembroke to join financially, educationally, and so the Vocational Planning Committee is going to meet next week, start to talk about those slide presentations. I'd expect bringing that to the full committee in March for you all to take a look at. The plan had always been placing it on the fall warrant in either fall of '25 or spring of '26, so we're still on that timeline, but there's a couple of steps that need to happen. The presentation to you all, there's some regional agreement language that we would need to hatch out and work through with South Shore Tech as well, so we want to get that process started.
And then, once we have the presentation here, we would vote to move it forward?
You would vote to put it on the warrant, right? So you all can either vote to put it on the warrant, or the Select Board can vote to put on the warrant if you choose not to. I think realistically, it would make sense to have the presentation at the committee level and not have you vote that night.
No, I would agree.
But then offer some, then offer some informational opportunities for folks to come and ask questions. The Chamber of Commerce has reached out about wanting to do something and really getting input before you all say yea or no.
But I, so I'm glad to clarify that. So, but the committee can vote to put it on the warrant at some point in time between now and before the Fall Town Meeting closes.
Correct.
Correct. Or the Select Board can do it. It's either or, it's not both.
Correct. We talked just a little bit about what timing makes sense. We want to make sure that we're asking, so there's two pieces to the vote. You're asking, do you want to join South Shore Tech? Yes or no? And I believe it would be a resounding yes. The second question is, do you want to pay to join South Shore Tech, which is a debt exclusion override? So I think the regional planning group has met several times and feels really strongly that we should be asking those questions at the same time.
I agree.
I think it's disingenuous to say, do you want to join? Get a big yes, and then be like, oh, by the way, we can't pay for it. So we really want the timing to sync up. I think it's important that we're giving voters the most accurate information as possible. Obviously, there is a budget for South Shore Tech, but as we get into the latter part of the spring and into the summer, those numbers become more final for them, so we want to be giving voters the, the actual close, as close as we can cost for Pembroke to join.
Okay.
So the slides that we had two years ago were showing that the earliest we could have students go in was 2029, so we're now looking.
It's still the same.
So, but that's eighth grader, that's eighth graders being able to join this coming year.
So it would be the fall of 2029 kids could go there, not the class of 2029. So that's when the building project would be complete?
Okay. Because two years ago, when we were asking which cohort of kids would be the first to get in, it was the class of 2029, not that it wouldn't be until 2029.
The conversations we have had has been about it being the, the fall of 2029, when the building project is complete and the capacity of the building raises from 650 to 900.
That, that's the key, right?
No, I understand, but I, 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 I'd have to go back and find them.
Sure. I can go back and look with you. We can.
Yeah, because I wasn't on the committee at that point, but I'm fairly certain, I remember asking, that it would be the class of, like, I think for one year past what we originally had projected.
Even if that, let's just say that was the case two years ago, the current data and information says.
Well, no. I understand that it's because we were waiting for them to pass this, but I feel like some of this, we should, the numbers have existed for a while, right? Like.
Correct. But the interest in adding Pembroke as a member town isn't as great for the other members if there is an additional capacity in the building. So the conversation then was if we joined now, what would, when could we join between the regional agreement and the vote to join ahead of the building project? I think kind of the conversations that happened at the planning committee level with Tom Pique, the superintendent at South Shore Tech, is that it is a bit of a better sales pitch to say to the member towns that as we're looking at an increased capacity, so you're not going to lose any seats, you know, over Rockland Whitman, but you're now going to bring on a new partner that can then help defray the, defray the cost of the new.
No, I know, I, I fully understand that. I just think that the intention originally, and I don't know if their building vote was later than they expected or whatnot, but I, I, I remember it being the class of 2029 because at the time, they were the sixth graders, and they're now the eighth graders who still don't have access to it.
Yeah, I don't remember it like that, but we can go back through and.
That's what I'm trying to see if I can find it on here, but I don't know where it is.
What we've talked about is the fall of 2029, when the new building opens, so.
But I think it's important to let people know, too, that even if we move it forward to the warrant, you know, move the warrant forward, like, either us or the Select Board, the member towns still have to vote.
They have to accept us.
Yeah, no, 100%.
To accept us. So like, I'm just.
And our town. I mean, it's, it's a multi-step process.
It's a multi-step, so like.
But, but my understanding is they, to split it 10 ways is better than them splitting it nine ways.
Certainly, but they'll have to take a vote, even if we are like, yes, let's go, you know, we have to get accepted. I just wanted to, like, level set so everybody understands that, so.
Yeah, no, I, I do.
You know, everybody at home, that is. Yeah, nobody understands.
Thank you, because there was, actually, there's a lot of chatter on the question about, well, why didn't we vote? When are we going to vote? What are the next steps?
Right.
So what I'm hearing is, the planning committee's going to meet in the next couple of weeks. We, you know, we will have a presentation in March. There will be another meeting after the presentation in March. People can ask questions. We can have a deeper discussion. Between now and prior to the warrant closing in the fall, this committee would have to vote on whether or not they want to promote it, or, not and, or the Select Board could vote to put it forward on the warrant. The warrant then would get voted. If it's there, then it would go to a debt exclusion override, and it would have to be voted by the town. When that happens, to your point, then the member towns would say, yes, we want Pembroke, or no, we don't.
Right.
Okay. I just want to be clear as far as timing goes. So still lays, but the goal is fall of 2025 town meeting.
Yes.
So future meeting dates? We have a meeting scheduled two weeks, three weeks from tonight?
Three weeks, because of February break, so it's the 25th.
So, right, it's the Tuesday after the break. David, I know you said you can't do that, correct?
Yeah, it's going to be, they're going to work commitment.
Are you okay if we meet?
Oh, yeah. I know it's just.
So I, I just think to keep.
This just came today, so.
No, 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 it's okay. We all, God knows, we all have issues with that, but I think to keep the budget momentum going, we should meet. Let's keep moving that forward. We are asking our representatives, David's going to reach out to Senator Fernandez, Representative Lanatra, and Representative Suizy, to join us for a meeting, hopefully, the first meeting in March.
March 4th.
March 4th, yep. Which will be good. I mean, there's a lot going on right now, right? With the governor's budget being out, some of the school funding stuff that's out there. You know, we've talked a lot here about special education, transportation issues, and there's a lot to talk to, to the reps about.
And they're going to be actually at the Select Board meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
If anyone wants to go. All three of those representatives will be at the Select Board meeting at 7 o'clock at the Town Hall.
And I have a couple of questions. Is there a budget meeting scheduled? Because I have a, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Okay. So just so, I want to make sure I understand. So the FY '26 Maintenance of Effort, which is doing exactly what we're doing right now, which is less the having the library and, you know, things that we had to cut.
Exactly what we're doing today at the year's price.
Is just under $41 million.
$40,880,000.
So I know tomorrow, the town manager is presenting his budget. Is, is the understanding that that's the number? Because I just want to be clear, everything that we just watched is not in there because that would be $42,342,599.
Correct. Bill and I had a conversation, the number that I gave him was our Maintenance of Effort budget. He asked me if there was any movement on that number yet. I said, no, we were still in our process of building our budget.